We have some opening announcements. The November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of the Board of Trustees is now called to order. Secretary Burford, please proceed with the roll call and housekeeping announcements.
Thank you. Trustees, please respond when I call your name. Christine Cronin.
Present.
Margot Gigan.
Present.
Gary George. Chuck Hoffman.
Present.
Oren Kikuo.
Present.
Erin Laird.
Present.
Tamara Mabbett is not with us today. George Mendoza. Cedric Greel. Kelly Ryan.
Here.
Brenda Smith.
Present.
Anna Stanley.
Present.
Brad Stevens.
Here.
Carrie Thompson.
Here.
Anne Mauricio Valerio.
Present.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you all.
I have some brief version of our housekeeping announcements. We ask everyone to please put your cell phones on do not disturb. Members of the media, if you have not already done so, please sign the sign in sheet at the recorder's desk to my left. For the meeting to be effective, speakers need to use the tabletop microphones, keeping the mic very close to your mouth. We ask that you turn the mic off when you aren't using it, and if you brought a laptop or device, please be sure the speakers and microphone are turned off. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Secretary Burford. We're going to start off with a moment of silence on behalf of former trustee Susan Corey. So if you don't mind, we're just going to Thank you all. Throughout her life, Susan Corey served in leadership roles in the greater Pendleton area. An alumna of EOU, Susan served on the Board of Trustees from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. Susan passed away just a little over a month ago. She is survived by her husband of fifty-four years and many family members. Susan gave a great deal of service for her community and to EOU. Thank you for this moment of silence. We're now going to move to the recognition of outgoing trustees. Chris has indicated to me that we're going to basically go to the podium or go somewhere right there by the placards, and then we're going to do some readings. Deidra Schreiber is not here. Do you still want to read a proclamation for her? Or do we? What are you thinking, sir?
Let's read it.
Okay.
Hello? Okay. So this camera's right there, George. So we on the board have the privilege of working with remarkably accomplished people, fellow trustees who give generously of their time and talents to safeguard the mission of Eastern Oregon University in service to the people of Oregon. Sadly, board terms come to an end, and we have to say goodbye to colleagues we respect and appreciate. Today, we're recognizing three trustees who've served the board with dedication and whose terms have ended or will end with this fiscal year. Those trustees are Deidra Schreiber, Brad Stevens, and Cheryl Martin. On our consent agenda yesterday, the board approved resolutions of appreciation for each of these trustees. Today, we have framed copies of those resolutions to present to them. Deidra is not here, but if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and read what the board adopted yesterday. Resolution of appreciation for Deidra Schreiber, whereas the Board of Trustees of Eastern Oregon University is the governing body of Eastern Oregon University, and whereas the members of the Board of Trustees are volunteers who are committed to the promise of higher education in Eastern Oregon and beyond, and whereas the trustees are drawn from alumni, students, staff, faculty, community members, and leaders in education, business, culture, and government, and whereas the trustees dedicate a great deal of personal time and energy to protecting and promoting the interests of Eastern Oregon University, and whereas Deidra Schreiber served as the student member of the Board of Trustees of Eastern Oregon University from September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, now therefore is resolved that the Board of Trustees of Eastern Oregon University expresses its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Deidra Schreiber, acknowledges her exceptional service to the board, and wishes her success in all her future endeavors. Deidra's not here, so we won't be presenting it physically to her, but we will be delivering her resolution to her soon. So our next person is Brad Stevens. And Brad, I'll also read your resolution. Whereas the board, so the first four whereses are the same on the H. I'll just say, whereas the trustees dedicate a great deal of personal time and energy to protecting and promoting the interests of Eastern Oregon University, and whereas Brad Stevens has served as a member of the Board of Trustees of Eastern Oregon University from July one, twenty sixteen, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and he continues to serve pending the appointment of a successor. And whereas trustee Stevens served with distinction as the chair of the Finance and Administration Committee from July twenty twenty through June of twenty twenty-four, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Eastern Oregon University expresses its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Brad Stevens, acknowledges his exceptional service to the board, and wishes him success in all his future endeavors.
All right, Brad, come on over. We're going to go over here, take a picture. Does he get the bag, too, afterwards? We have some stuff for you. I'm going to do this real quick. Just, and I'm glad that we have, for me, more time with Brad is good. I'm going to do this one for Cheryl. She's a big deal. He's a big deal, and I'm thankful for her. Whereas the member of the Board of Trustees of Eastern Oregon University are volunteers who are committed to the promise of higher education in Eastern Oregon and beyond, and whereas the trustees dedicate a great deal of personal time and energy to protecting and promoting the interests of Eastern Oregon University, and whereas Cheryl Martin is one of the original trustees appointed to the board, serving from December twelfth, twenty fourteen, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and whereas trustee Martin has served as the vice chair of the Board of Trustees from November twelve, twenty twenty, to August thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, and as the chair of the Board of Trustees from September one, twenty twenty-two, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and whereas Cheryl Martin presided over the Board of Trustees during the search to fill the vacant position of university president, and during the first year of the presidency of President Kelly Ryan, and whereas in September, Chair Martin announced her retirement from services chair and trustee of the Board of Trustees of Eastern Oregon University, effective October first, twenty twenty-four. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Eastern Oregon University express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation for Cheryl Martin for her dedicated leadership. We acknowledge her exceptional service to the board and wish her success in all of her future endeavors. Let's honor Cheryl Martin. We also have a gift for you. That's a special gift for you, besides the bag and the swag. I think she should open it, and after you open it, say something. All right? So say something cool. Say something fun. This was a gift from the entire board. Trustee Mabbett was the person that first thought of it, and then she organized our board to do something kind for you. And it's something that she thinks you would really appreciate. Anne Tamara does send her love. She wanted me to make sure that you knew that.
I thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of your lives and for you being a part of mine. I'm not good at impromptu speeches, so I probably won't, but thank you to everyone for what you've been and what you do for the university and our communities. It is immensely appreciated by everyone, but I have just been so attached to all of you and all of you from not just the board but across the campus. So thank you very much. I was thinking about a couple of things. One, carry the torch for maintaining our self-governance at the university, and please stay involved in that endeavor. And it's critically important to Eastern Oregon University for us to have our own governing board and step into your own voice. Don't feel like you have to follow the crowd. If you feel strong about something, don't be afraid to stand up and say, wait a minute, let's think about this, or here's a different perspective. So make sure you step into your own voice and use common sense. A lot of times, that's not such a prevalent thing anymore, so think about the big picture and where common sense comes from. So thank you so much. I'm going to miss you all. So thank you.
I'm going to annoy Chris Burford for a second. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and we're all going to give you hugs, and you can say goodbye to everybody, and then we're going to get to it.
There you go, guys. Give her a hug. Give her a hand, city.
As Gib gets ready, I'll do a quick announcement. We are going to do a spotlight, student spotlight on our summer bridge programming. Here at Eastern Oregon University, student success is our first priority. Across the university, people are taking action to remove unnecessary barriers to student achievement. This work is consistent with our goal of having a more equitable university that serves a broad array of students, meeting them where they are at, and helping them to achieve the benefits of higher education. EOU's summer bridge program is an important part of that work. Dr. Corey Brewster is here. Tell us about the program. Dr. Brewster, please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you for having us this morning. Again, I'm Corey Brewster. I'm a professor of English and Writing and the director of the summer bridge program. I am joined with Assistant Director, recently promoted yesterday, Assistant Director of Summer Bridge, Haley Hohalter, who has been both a student and a longtime mentor in the program. We also have Oren Kikuo, who is a lead mentor in the summer bridge program here on the Board of Trustees, and my co-conspirator, Beanie Moses, Associate Vice President of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. Unfortunately, we thought we would have more students here with us today, but between class, work, and military obligations, getting over to this building at nine-thirty in the morning was not going to happen. So what we thought we would do is start with two short videos that our program produced this year that give you a little better sense of what our program is and students' experience in it. And then after those videos, we'll run some slides in the background while Haley and Oren, and I talk a little bit more about the program.
Coming as a first-generation student, nobody really showed me what college was or how to get to college, so coming here was a little bit of a struggle.
I thought that I was going to be the only Pacific Islander. I realized that there's also other Pacific Islanders. There's people that are like me that are going to be here and that we're going to be in this journey together.
I got to meet lots of professors, students, staff, and that was through the summer bridge program. And getting to know these people, they can be your support group. They can hold you accountable for your studies, and they can provide the resources that you need to overcome the challenges that you might face throughout your educational journey.
There's a bunch of us that just need guidance or understanding to have a little push in a direction of like, where do we want to go and what do we want to do to make
It is such a calming environment. It's really nice getting out of my car and not just seeing like a classic city skyline. I might be a little biased, but I think it's one of the most beautiful places we can be. I immediately see Mount Emily, the Blue Mountains. That's the first thing I see every single day. And I think that's really like grounded me in a sense because like I'm in like nature pretty much. I chose EOU because it is so close to my home, and family is really important to me, and being close to my family is really important to me. I also think it's really important about the faculty and the president because faculty and the president and staff of the university care about us and really want to be there. Ever since I could read, I've been drawn to history. Putting in my application, I realized that they had a Native American Studies minor, and so that really, it kind of clicked for me. I was like, yeah, I have to do that because I haven't seen it anywhere else. And that part of history really intrigues me. I'm on campus more than I'm not on campus. I'm here a lot. I work at the library. I love my job there. It's very rewarding. They really care about the workers there, and it's quiet, so I can study. And I also work for summer bridge, and I work for study nights, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And so we go into the multicultural center, and we mentor. Like, we help students if they need help. There's tutors. And I started being a mentor in April of twenty twenty-three, and I have been a mentor since then. Summer Bridge is a program for transfer and international students, first-year students, to come early to college and get a two-credit class, and you'll explore the community, make friends, and you really like build a community prior to college starting. So it makes college just a little bit easier. So being a summer bridge mentor and student have like really pushed me to be more patient. It's really helped me learn how to like collaborate with people who do things differently than I do and think differently than I do.
So these were two of five videos that we produced as part of the program this year, really trying to think about not marketing EOU as much as promoting student retention. We wanted underrepresented students to be able to see themselves in the university and to be able to speak to what life would be like here. So it gives you also a little bit of background, just what we've been up to. We're going to run some slides in the background, so you can get more pictures of all that we've been up to this year. You have some information, I think, in the board cover sheet about summer bridge and the associated programs, but I wanted to just use the time that we do have available, which isn't very much, to turn it over to students to talk about their experience and then to answer any questions that you all have.
That was good timing, because that was my year on the slideshow, right, as she turned it over to me. So I've been with both summer bridge and EOU since September twenty-one, when I came a couple weeks early to do the first summer bridge, like under the name of summer bridge program. And that year, we were in a big, kind of circus-like tent outside of Enlow on the hill. The wind knocked over our whiteboards more than once. It was a little chaotic, but it was a lot of fun. I'm still voting to bring those tents back. Corey hears it every year at every planning meeting. Corey hears it every year at every planning meeting. But, so that was my year as a student. And then the next year, I, well, actually, a few months later, I was hired on as a mentor and I came back for the next program as a lead mentor. And the year after that, I was a lead mentor. Then one anxious little day, I walked up to Corey and said, hey, Corey, you're not paying me enough. And I got me and three of my coworkers a promotion that day. It was very nerve-wracking. I've never like done that before, so it was professional improvement on my half, like standing up for three of us and being like, hey, I think we deserve to be at the next pay level. And sure enough, Corey agreed. She gave us a new title of senior lead mentors because we had all been there since the beginning. And then just the other day at Study Night, she promoted us again in title to assistant directors. So that's now my new fancy title. And yeah, every year, we see new students come in. I get the lovely challenge of trying to remember a bunch of names and faces, and then I see them across campus every year, and it's just one big family that never stops growing. And that's something I really love about our program. Do you want me to go in more detail or is that a good share?
Hi. I'm not speaking to you as a board member. I'm speaking to you as a former student slash now lead mentor for the Summer Bridge Program. So I came to EOU last year and I was fully prepared to live a nice, quiet, uneventful life, and as you can see, that's failed. I'm usually a very shy and quiet person. I don't like going out of my comfort zone very much. I'm very comfortable staying in my comfort zone most of the time. But as soon as I got here, they just threw us into this program where they put us with a bunch of students who've never met before and at the same time, students that we grew up with. So it was a great way to slowly immerse ourselves into diversity and trying to include more perspectives. And just two weeks after the program ended, Corey was nice enough to invite me to my first national conference of writing in Colorado. And that was where we really grew closer and where I really got out of my comfort zone because they gave me the option to either present or be part of the panel. I'm thinking like, oh, free trip to Colorado, I might as well, you know, might as well present and to talk about my experience there. And it was just the first of many opportunities that were given to me. I became editor of the Science Journal. I then got accepted into the National Conference on Race and Ethnicity with another mentor who can't be here today. We were two of 25 nationally selected scholars and we got to go to Hawaii, which was so fun, which was so great. And now I became the lead mentor and this summer, we were able to get more students, at least 40 to 50 students, a good mix of Pacific Islander students and students that are from Oregon, some even one from Haiti, which, yeah, we worked together also in the Science Journal too. And it was a great way to be able to get what I learned and what I experienced and then transfer it to other incoming students and show them all the great opportunities that have been presented to me and will also be presented to them. So, yeah, it was great. Like Summer Bridge helped me in so many ways that I didn't even dream possible, so, yeah. Thank you.
So I know that we're short on time. Should we open it up to questions?
Yep, that's where we're at. Are there any questions or comments from our trustees?
I have a question. What do you feel, I mean, anybody can answer. What do you think would be the most important skill to have as a mentor, the fundamental mentoring skill? If you had to list one, you must be this, you must do that, what would that be?
Open-mindedness. You have to be open to knowing that everyone's coming from different places and have different needs, and so you're going to have to support them differently. You can't treat two students the same because no two students are the same. So you have to be open to learning where they're coming from and adjusting how you support them.
I'd like to also answer. I also think adaptation is pretty important because honestly, we've been through a lot, a lot of challenges from COVID to our bus breaking down at some point, trying to pick up these students and also trying to solve internal conflicts and just trying to get along with as many people as possible, making sure to guide them towards success and towards settling here in a new environment.
Trustee Keegan.
Thank you, Chair Mendoza. First, I just want to applaud your efforts, Dr. Brewster, on supporting this program. I believe bridge programs are vital to student success. And, you know, the slides that you were showing us is just a reminder of how we can contribute to positive social change in meaningful ways. And I think that you're also, you're not just providing opportunities, you're showing a way of looking at things and clearly, it's effective because they're passing on these ideas to the next set of students that will be coming in for mentoring. So I just wanted to applaud your efforts, all of you. I think the spotlight is well-deserved and you have a great leader in Dr. Brewster. So I yield back.
Thank you.
I just had a question because you were noting, you know, a lot of the Pacific Islanders and those coming internationally to join us, but then you mentioned Oregon students as well. So what is sort of a combination of shoulder tap and self-identified? How do students become part of the bridge program?
So we partner with admissions to recruit people into our program. And when we go to Mountaineer Days and everything, so we always have a table next to all the clubs and me along with several of our other mentors are usually there eight in the morning. Got to love mornings. And we're recruiting people, talking to them, talking to students and parents alongside each other, welcoming into our program. So we get kind of like, I'd say like two-thirds, one-third split of students from Washington, Idaho, Oregon, and then Pacific Islanders. Because when they go into the islands, part of the recruitment is saying, hey, you can come a little early, come to this program. It helps you get a better understanding of what you're walking into. It gives them a chance to do like college-level education and stuff. And if they have any like barriers, a lot of our students who are coming from the islands have a few extra things they have to go through to finalize their residency here and like do the program and everything, so setting up bank accounts, getting different like little phone chip thingies so their phones actually work here. So we get a lot of people through Corey, Beanie, and Sam going and recruiting them and like mentioning it while they're there and getting them to sign up while they're also like applying to EOU and then just hear word of mouth and recruitment at Mountaineer Days and Preview Days and such.
Trustee Reel.
I'll keep mine short. Just wanted to thank the team for the work that you guys have done, especially just, I know you a little closer, Haley, but I remember, you know, you came in at a pretty rough time for a lot of students. And, you know, I appreciate that you took the initiative and tried to help other students through some of those times. And I know that you were wearing multiple hats when you were on student government and, yeah, just I've heard really good things about this program, this presentation aside, and I know that it's helped out a lot of students. So thank you guys very much for being involved with that. And I know that, you know, as new people come in and take on that torch, it'll get even stronger over time. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'd say like the one hat I've consistently worn my whole time at EOU is my Summer Bridge hat, even if it's changed forms a little bit. And I definitely like, as a student throughout the program, this program has helped me a lot being here, even while being in other programs at EOU.
And I'll just say, as we conclude it, thank you to Dr. Brewster, to Haley and Orang. I was a first-generation student and programs like this, especially for, I'll just say, BIPOC, low poverty, first-generation kids, that's why we stick it out typically because of those relationships and those connections, understanding how the system works and people helping people like me understand how systems work so that they can figure it out and thrive. Those deep relationships or those deep connections significantly add to the retention that we have in schools and it's a lifelong, to me, it's a lifelong impact. I wouldn't be here if there weren't programs like this. So thank you for doing that.
I just wanted to take a moment. Corey Brewster was distinguished faculty member honored by the Faculty Senate. They choose the most distinguished faculty member of the university. She was chosen last year. I had the opportunity to attend her celebration and I had gotten to know Corey a wee bit over the course of last year, and she's just kind of a force to be reckoned with. Training up mentors and helping these students, she's given me the honor of getting to visit the program and speak with the students, and they really do come in. I think to Haley, there's a sense of overwhelm, you know, and you see them in the start of the year and then you start running across students through the course of the year and they blossom and they thrive and they transform. And it's because of really the excellent mentorship of Dr. Brewster. So I just want to make sure she is sort of seen in that light. Thank you, Corey.
Thank you. And thank you for letting us highlight the best thing that we do.
Thank you. All right, team, we're going to move on. Thank you again to Dr. Brewster and Haley and Orang. It's an enrollment update that we're receiving. Each November board meeting, the board hears presentations about the university's enrollment and retention. Some years, this section of the agenda is more pleasant than others. As you know, from a review of the materials from this agenda, President Ryan has some good news for us this year. President Ryan, when you're ready.
Thank you. I changed places because I was actually scared of Zooming and doing this at the same time. I will confess that. I recently delivered university updates to the campus focusing on this and really just failed to move forward the slides. I trust that each of you will let me know if I fail to move forward with the slides. So here we go. Just in terms of headlines, we had both growth in headcount and credit hours this year, growth in first-year and continuing graduate students, and then growth in on-campus retention rates. While there's good news, it would be unlike me to solely focus on that, always looking for new ways to improve. There are also some problem areas, some areas that we need to pay attention to as we think about the future of the university. And I'm hopeful Dr. Geisinger and Rockefeller, VP Rockefeller, will be able to kind of help bring out how we're working on these areas of stagnancy through the committee work and the student and academic affairs over this year, because there is work to be done, of course. And in those areas, we have some stagnancy in our online headcount and credit hours. Our online retention rates, as you'll soon see, have just sort of been lingering. And then we've had difficulty with our transfer rates, so I'm going to share some of those with you. But first, of course, the good news. So we have had gains in headcount this year. You'll notice the number on the slides a little different from the one attached to the cover sheet, and that's because we've removed those individuals who were in the OSU programs in addition to some of the students who are auditing. But so good gains in headcount and, you know, credit hours are the driver of our budget, so good information there on gains in credit hours, too. I can't express enough, and I sort of hinted at this yesterday, that what has happened here this year is special and we hope that this will continue to happen, but what we faced were incredible headwinds, the headwinds of a state that has not invested, we mentioned yesterday, the 40-40-20, that really hasn't invested in inspiring that dream of college-going. And so we face a state, and in particular, a region, that in many ways shut the door on higher education. And yet our people went out there and they brought it, and they brought more and more young folk to the universities. Universities like ours this year, early signs indicate, there's been a drop, an 8.5% drop in public four-year universities in the first-year class. This is kind of scary, right? Because those are nationwide trends, and I put Oregon's here as well, just to give you a sense of, you know, what's happening in Oregon and what's happening in the nation regarding higher education. We are part of a larger context and the battle must constantly be fought. We did see gains in first-year students as well as our continuing graduate students as we've added new programs. And this is obviously great news. In particular, we'll be releasing individuals into the community who have the skill sets to help advance them. We always like to share that EOU is part of the brain remain rather than the brain drain, and so we're excited to see these numbers. One of the things I've been most pleased with this year was that the focus on retention had results. Retention numbers are really difficult to move because it's not just the campus experience that results in new students' persistence year over year. There are systemic issues that have to be addressed regarding finances and just other issues in community. Are they supported at home in their college-going dream? Are they able to continually resist that job at Amazon or elsewhere that's offering a high wage but maybe no growth potential, right? So there's a lot of factors outside of what we do here on campus, and yet we killed it. I mean, I'm not kidding, we killed it. This is incredible growth in retention. I've been working on student success for a long time. It's my passion. It's why I do this job. The growth we saw this year is special. We're unlikely to see that kind of jump, which we saw this year, year over year, because these numbers are so difficult to move. What this shows us, what our first-year headcount shows us, what our continuing graduate student headcount shows us, is that this university has momentum. We will continue to keep pushing, we will continue to keep centering student success, and I hope that we will continue to keep improving. There are issues that need to be addressed at the university to maintain our healthy enrollments. Among those are a longer-term stagnancy in enrollments online. I shared this same exact finding with you last year, actually. Last year, as I was going through our numbers, I had noted that there had been a lack of growth in part-time students that really wasn't making up for in gains we were getting in full-time students. That has continued this year, this trend. So we, you know, in general, would prefer people take full-time course loads because they're much more likely to persist and be successful at the university. Long-term goals are wonderful, but each of us knows that the crumbs along the way are the things that keep you moving. So we definitely want to focus on full-time, but we do have these signs of stagnancy and we are down 51 students in online coursework. Other areas where I'm really hopeful we can start to move is in our off-campus retention rates. I wanted to be clear, you know, one of the things, and I think Tress is in this room, which is nice, one of the things that I like to share is, we've discussed this with y'all before, but we don't get new online first-year students, right? Most often, our online students come into us as transfers. They come in with already existing credits. You can see our numbers of new freshmen that do fully online are quite low. Where we get really the majority of our online students are from transfer, they're adults, they're reskilling. So you can see that our new freshman numbers are just stagnant. There's no growth. We're not really improving in our online delivery and our online retention. Similarly, there's a stagnancy in our retention of online transfer students. These numbers tell, I think, all the story that you need to see. This is going to be an area where we really have to dig in. When I arrived, just being honest, I was focused on building out campus vitality. It was a campus that felt empty and that was missing some of the liveliness of pre-pandemic college campuses. It's time now for me to focus those same efforts on our online students because the national puzzle and piece, you know, the numbers aren't great for online students, but again, there's room for momentum and growth there. So I'm hoping to gather a faculty, a group of faculty, to help us design best practices and spread the good news among their peers because the interactions that are going to be most important there are Because the interactions that are going to be most important there are among faculty, right? Faculty-to-student relationships and online are absolutely critical. And then some other things I want to share with you as we look at the longer-term picture of what online enrollment means. So what's increasingly happened over the course of the last probably five to seven years in higher education is the introduction of large-bag chip universities investing in their online portfolios as ways to prepare for 2026 demographic collapse, but also, just frankly, the incredible popularity of online courses, maybe not degrees, among students because it offers them a really good deal of flexibility. What this slide shows you is how difficult it is to enter this market and to be successful in this market. As y'all know, EOU has a longstanding history in online enrollment, but this shows you the stakes, the amount of money that's being thrown into this, and our ability to compete in what is a fierce, fierce marketplace. Even more kind of difficult for us, and I think Scott's behind me, is he? No? No, Ray or Scott? But, you know, what we're seeing is these giants really capturing the entire markets of business and education. So, you know, the issues, you know, and this is something that I've shared with y'all over the course of my travels, I think, individually in our conversations, the Grand Canyons, the Western Governors, the Southern New Hampsures. It's become even harder to compete with them as they've become giants, giants in the field. And so, you know, we're working with our partners at Rise Point to do more, to try and lift our programs up. But it's clear that we're going to have to start working on key signifying pieces of each of these graduate portfolios to compete in a market where they have all the money that we don't to market. All the people, there's a new Grand Canyon office right there outside of Boise, not sure if anyone's seen it. They're showing up everywhere. So it's an increasingly difficult marketplace, and it's not something that the university can rely on as much as we have. So we really have to think wisely about this. And then finally, the trouble spot from last year that I brought to you remains a trouble spot in this year. So we still have really high transfer outrates. I'm pleased to share that this number has decreased by 3% from last year, but that is a high transfer outrate. And our incoming transfers also remain a problem. They're down 8%. I'm pleased to share with you that Dr. Geisinger has established a transfer committee to help us work this out. I've also tasked Faculty Senate with taking a look at our general education portfolio, which I do believe is an issue when it comes to transfers. We're asking for far more credits than our peers, and the Faculty Senate discovered this for themselves in their own research. So it's really important that Faculty Senate, of course, take the lead in this. They own the curriculum here, and I'm hopeful that they will do just that, own it, lead it, and move it. And finally, Peter and I are working on a newest project, just trying to figure out ways to reengage our stopouts. Rise Point does a really good job of reaching back out to them. They do bring back stopouts on the online market. We need to make sure we have similar processes in place for our on-campus students, but also probably even redoubling our efforts there. I recently met with all the trues in PSU to try and discuss how we can collaborate better to bring reenrollments to each of our universities because of the declining college-going rates in the state. If the colleges don't address it, I just don't think anyone else is going to. And so we're trying to take a leadership role there. And then just to give you a look at what our pie looks like, one of the things that people often wonder about is why I talk so much about reenrollment and student success. And I think this pie does the best, does the best at explaining that to you. That green part, that's our returning students. That's the part we have to keep, keep, keep investing in. And when those students graduate, that's when that performance funding kicks in. But as I mentioned yesterday, in a state like this with state investments being what they are, we have to continually invest in our enrollment profile, right? And as you can see there, we've done really well with our new first-time freshmen, and let's hope that they add to that pie and the green side next year, right? We want to work hard to retain these students. And we'll have to work again on clearing up that new transfer pipeline because that helps backfill when students do leave the university. And then I shared this with you as well, and this hasn't changed. You know, we really can't invest in new programs unless there's going to be significant growth opportunities. I've asked Provost Geisinger to develop an academic master plan that looks at what are the jobs in need in our community? Is there student engagement in these other programs? And so he's working on that, and we'll be bringing together a group of faculty soon. College-going rates in the state, national universities continue to pose a challenge for us here locally. I still believe reenrollment, retention, and persistence are our greatest opportunities. Doesn't mean we don't fight the fight, doesn't mean we're not out there, you know, trying to get freshmen, but I really am letting folks know on campus, we need to invest in who we have here. It's real expensive to bring a student here. Let's make sure they stay. And those students who do stay, they have good experiences, and they're sharing it with others, and they're creating a reputation for us. And of course, we have to continue to work on investing new populations to succeed at EOU with the demographic challenges we're facing. And we'll continue to keep looking at that in various ways and means. I think that's my last slide. So I'll go ahead and stop there, and I'm open to any questions.
Trustee Lehrer.
First, Dr. Ryan, thank you. I always appreciate your enrollment presentations. It just feels very thorough and nuanced, and I think sometimes it's really easy to get away from the nuance and try to just blanket when we start talking about enrollment and talk too much in generality. So I appreciate the nuance you insert to this. One of my, I have a million questions, but one of them that I just kind of stood out is in this online space. I think that's going to be top of mind in our conversations for a long time. Do we have any sense of those who are leaving where they're going? I mean, I think nationally, you sort of pointed to this, the completion rate of online is just atrocious to begin with. Are they stopping out being done, or are they going and finding somewhere else to transfer? Do we know?
Yeah, and we're looking at the National Student Clearinghouse data. But yeah, you know, one thing we do know, and again, this isn't good news, but, you know, Grand Canyon University is picking up our stopouts. They have shorter terms. They offer just a little bit more flexibility because they have such a sizable staff, right? And so they are sometimes able to capture our stopouts and our transfer outs, right? Because they're looking for something a little different. Obviously, this is something we're tackling. We have to do a deeper dive into the data. And then, you know, some people just stop out to work, right? And there's family circumstances and financial circumstances. But yeah, we need to work harder to keep our students here.
Trustee Valerio.
Thank you. Very informative, very thorough. Really appreciate the presentation. EOU was one of the early universities that invested in online, offering entire majors. So we were ahead of the curve two decades ago, decade and a half ago. The giants are what they are, giants now, and they make the competition very hard. And with that comes the branding, and it's hard to fight the branding, the perceived value. Are there new models, courageous new niches that we should be jumping in with two feet in being ahead of the next trend? I'm asking myself, but I'm asking. Where is the novelty on this field? Because catching up with the current trend may be exhausting, and maybe we may be losing it at the end. What are the trends that we see that could be interesting in discussing, investing in?
It's speed to degree. I mean, speed to degree is the main concern. Well, first price is the main concern, but speed to degree is the second largest concern among our online learners. And so finding ways to help them get there faster is kind of important. And I think for us, online transferability would make sense, right? So making sure that we have three plus, so you take an undergraduate degree, and then you can fast-track into a graduate degree. And then short-term credentials are also very popular. Rise Point presented to us, I think, like six or seven suggestions that can build out shorter-term credentials, often in the business space. And I think those can be useful to us. The truth is, while we were once ahead, you know, Oregon State University has decided to invest in online education. There was a recent report at Faculty Senate that, you know, their main growth, their planning is in the online space. And when you think about the capital that they're investing in their marketing versus us, you know, I don't like to use the words "it's not fair," but sometimes you do feel that way in your heart and your soul. We do know other things, though. We know that students are attracted to universities that they're aware of, right? And Eastern Oregon University has historically had a strong online presence. The problem is, is these giants grow, that reputation gets eclipsed, right? And so we need to continue investing in our nearby, you know, nearby students. Students in online actually continue to like a local university and one they recognize. But yeah, it's money, it's speed to degree and shorter-term credentials.
Thanks, Chair Cronin.
Dr. Ryan, thank you for this report, this extensive report. Lots of good news here, and I appreciate that. And then, as we've been discussing, some areas for concern, and I'm following a little bit up on Trustee Lehrer's questions about understanding who are these students are that are, that we want, and that come and then leave, and why they're leaving, and that data collection. And then, kind of, I guess, one of my thoughts or questions is, is how is that data being collected, and then who is looking at that data, and how is that being used? I'm from that era of when we had less competition, and there was a lot of, EOU was a leader. And what I remember, and what I know is still true today, is that we do a better job when we get those students, we really do, in terms of providing a quality, quality experience. And it bothers me a lot to hear speed to degree because that does not equate to me with quality necessarily at all. So part of it is we have to educate people that they don't just want speed, they want, they need quality if they're going to proceed in life. But I guess, I guess, I would like to see, well, I don't know even how to say it. I guess, I guess my question is, are we able to tell the story to the constituents that we might have? There is tremendous competition, but when we, I think word of mouth, if we can get that word out, I think that there is a market there that is still valuable to us. And advising, the advising level that we provide to students, I think, is still much better than what, and much more personal than what most students get at other online options.
Yeah, you know, I do obviously agree with you. I believe in our product. And I will share, one of the things that I don't think people know about Rise Point, our OPM partner, is actually they engage in pretty incredible efforts to try and keep students knowing about the national kind of loss of students. So they have student success coaches. Tressa and I met recently about it, where they're contacting students, they're checking Canvas, they're letting them know, I need to meet with you this week, next week. So we really have a robust partnership there. They're not just advertising for us, you know, they're trying to keep students in the seats, right? So I think there's, you know, there's a couple things we need to do. We obviously need to build out those best practices and engaging teaching methods, which isn't to say I don't think we have engaging teaching methods. It's just when the challenges are this fierce, we just have to kind of go the extra mile. And we have some great faculty who are always willing to experiment and play, and I think can help us build out something exciting and new. I agree with you, the word-of-mouth piece is critically important. One of the issues, I recently visited with Rise Point about some of the services that they're offering, and Google also provided an overview of what an online student is like, and I'd be happy to provide those materials to the committee because they're fascinating. But the new way that students are actually kind of shopping for a school, if you will, is something that EAB also has looked at, and it's called like stealth, stealth searching. So they're not going to click on anything that gives you their information until they're pretty much ready to put in an application. And so they're really hard to track and follow. And Google shared that the average kind of online student is looking for 32 weeks before they even make a small commitment, and then at that point, they're making multiple. So they're looking for like the best offer. So it's a challenging situation. I will share that the data piece is something Peter's really engaged in. We're working with EAB to really analyze those numbers and find out ways to prevent stopouts, and as I mentioned, working on that re-enrollment campaign with Portland, Western, Southern, and OIT. I'm hoping that's fruitful. We've just started that process. They're supposed to get us a proposal by January for these larger efforts. And I do think that will probably benefit us in some ways because we have the most online options among those universities, particularly in undergraduate space. That's really what makes EOU unique, is the undergraduate offerings, though obviously we also need to lift up the other offerings as well.
Thank you so much.
We have Trustee Gigan and Trustee Kikua.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank you for your presentation. I always find them very helpful. I did want to make a comment. You got a very good point. Chair Cronin had a very good point about the concern about standards dropping because of this new landscape that we're in. And I just want to mention that, you know, I'm very outraged in what's going on, because I'm very passionate about education and where it's going. And I don't think that it's necessarily a drop in standards. We're not going to change what we teach. We're going to change where and how we teach. I think that that's where we need to pivot ourselves, and that's how we'll be able to carve ourselves out in a unique way. I believe that that's the place that we need to look. I also wanted to mention that throughout the nation, traditional students that come out of high school don't necessarily, right now, look to online programming. Usually, they'll go to a traditional program, and then after maybe their first year, they become an athlete, and they find that the online environment provides them with some flexibility, and then they transition to that. So I just wanted to ask, you know, if we are using that freshman online enrollment number as a barometer, you know, to remind ourselves that there are limits to data and what we can gather from that, and perhaps we shouldn't even use that as a barometer because of the environment right now. That'll change maybe in the future, but for right now, I don't know that that's the most effective of our students. But I hope that.
Yeah, I mean, we're definitely more focused online in the transfer piece, and then on-campus, we're really focused on the new freshmen. I actually agree with you about, I don't know that I think that the speed to degree reduces quality. And I'll share this because my husband has a master's degree, and he was enrolled in a kind of fast-track program, and there were some courses that he decided to opt to take slowly, and they usually were ones with like, I hope that he's not listening, just realized I'm talking about my husband at a board meeting. But he, you know, he would usually choose to take courses with high level of math slowly, whereas other courses, he really liked investing short-term, large amounts of time because you learn so much, and it was something, something that just sort of became part of your daily life. For example, I remember taking Spanish when I was an undergraduate, and this is a far better example than bringing my husband into it. You know, I took a fast-paced course for Spanish over the summer, and by the end of the summer, I was dreaming in Spanish because I was doing it so often. I do not dream in Spanish and barely speak it today. But I, and that's my own fault, but I agree that the quality can be good. It's a matter of student intentions and time and faculty mentoring.
Let's do a final question. Trustee.
Thanks for the presentation. It made things really clear. I just wanted to ask, are there any specific areas on our online programs that we can target, whether it's the curriculum or other programs that we have, that might help increase retention for online students, or at least get them to recommend the program for other students? Thank you.
Yeah, I really think it's going to come down to Yeah, I really think it's going to come down to, to the teaching practices. I really believe that. I think, you know, we have some new standards that have come out from the federal government that are really leveling up all of our teaching practices, the delivery of video and other materials and formats that just make it more accessible to a wider variety of students. These standards and the embrace of them by our faculty in the coming years will really turn this institution into a high-performing, neurodiverse-serving, you know, regardless of your background, if you're first generation or other, it's all accessible. I think these standards are ones that, that a lot of universities have strived for, for a long time. The federal government just happens to be making us do it now. I think that could turn it. And I think, too, it's a matter of creating exciting spaces of mentorship. You know, when the, some of our online students attend our graduation here, and there was a lot of enthusiasm from those students. They knew their professors' names, they were excited to see this place that they had seen in pictures. I also do think there's something for us to be said about increasing online engagement. It's something VP Rockefeller and I are talking about. I communicate with all of our students, you know, every other two weeks, I send them notices. Our online students are the ones that are most likely to write me back and share with me their experiences. And I know we're going to try and do our Resource Thursdays through AVP Moses's office, and just trying to get a little bit more activity for our online students outside of the class experience, right? Because right now, it's, it's pretty limited. So I think building that up, creating that kind of vitality will help us as well. But there's a, there's just a lot of opportunity for us in this space. I'm just hopeful that Team EOU will, will actually step on it and move on it.
Trustee Carrie Thompson gave me a look, so it's great for him to...
Quick questions. I don't really know that it's a question, but when I'm out going to events, I'm amongst the giants, you know, that's all the go-to military affairs are for-profit institutions. And when I first, I've been doing this for several years, and when I first started, you know, potential students would come in, walk by my table, they're like, "Who the hell is Eastern Oregon?" You know, "We don't know." But, you know, been doing this for a while, and now they're starting to know me, know who Eastern Oregon is. The education service officers on the base refer students to us, and it's just, you know, it's, we need to actually get out there, get our brand out there and our name out there, and it's, how do we go about doing that to increase enrollment? And where does that money come from?
Yeah, so RisePoint has started investing in doing more of that labor, going out, attending community colleges, Head Start and other, to sort of beat the bushes around this. I think you're exactly right, Carrie. It is truly about relationships. That's what makes EOU special, so surely our recruitment efforts should also do the same. And I would share that RisePoint is a good partner in this in the sense that they only serve universities like us. They don't work with flagships. They understand our mission. They know that we are about access, upskilling, and helping people have better lives. And the fact that they offer, for example, student success coaches is a key indicator of that. But we do have to do more, and we have to come up with, with ways to be clever. And I think the curriculum is part of that, though, right? Because we have to attract students to the programs that they want. They have to see the credential. And so faculty, we'll need faculty partners in that work.
All right, team, we're going to get ready for a break. I'll share some final thoughts. I don't think you need to respond, Dr. Ryan, but what I'm going to share from a board perspective is I do think we need to have a critical eye. I think our academic and student affairs committee needs to be really looking at what we're doing with online and how we're adding or not adding anything, and if it's working or not working in terms of the investments that we do. I think our finance and administration also needs to have a critical eye on any kind of innovation that we're doing. Right now, I'm, I'm getting the vibe that RisePoint and its hope for increased enrollment isn't necessarily creating any increased enrollment. So whatever we do in the future with that, we should really understand the second order and third order consequences of staying, and the second order and third order consequences of transferring out, and what that would look like from a stopout process, and with any students that have degrees, and how we would support them to wrap up their degrees. The other things I think that we're doing, that I know that I really like that Eastern Oregon's doing is what we're doing with direct admissions in schools, I think, will be a fruitful path for students potentially enrolling in our, here on campus. But I also think if we, we share out what can happen online, you can also increase enrollment with online through that. And there's just a lot that I got out of it, but the, you know, whatever we're doing to increase on campus, we need to keep replicating that. But whatever we're doing, where we're losing online, we need to keep innovating and figuring out if it's a good value with what we're doing with RisePoint.
Yeah. And I would, even though you told me I don't have to, I'm going to. I do just want to say one thing, and one thing we need to keep in mind, and you know those slides I showed you about the increased market share of those online universities that have some on-campus populations? Think about the market share when they ask Google to run an ad or other, you know, channels where colleges are advertised. Our buying power is significantly less unless we are part of a consortium that buys advertisements. And that is the power of RisePoint. That is the power. We have kept online students probably because of that buying power. Had EOU negotiated those ads without a partner that serves over 100 universities, we wouldn't be serving nearly as many ads. So that's something I just want to share, and, and I think you're smart. I obviously have a critical eye when I present things. This could have been a heck yeah, we made it presentation, and I think it's smart for the board to, to do the same. We have to think about the future, always.
All right, thank you. All right, team, we've got a 10-minute break.[1018.62]
We're now going to have an annual update on the implementation of our DEIA strategic plan. Beanie Moses, Associate Vice President of Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging, will now present you an update on the implementation of our Diversity Equity Inclusion and Access Strategic Plan of 2020. Beanie, please proceed once you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. As Chair Mendoza stated, this is the annual board update. This is a campus-wide plan that was established and passed in 2020. It provides a guide for how we do our work collectively as a campus in uniting our collective equity efforts to focus on key departments that work together to help us achieve these goals. So I'm going to start by kind of going over the five goals within the plan, just to give you a little bit of a background. The first goal is recruitment, retention, and development. And the objective within the goal is to increase and retain diverse students, faculty, staff, and administrative professionals through targeted and innovative recruitment, retention, and professional development. There are initiatives that are ongoing and specific to this that we continue to work on. Specific for students, there were some initiatives around the Latinx American Indian Recruitment Task Force. We worked on the Pacific Islander Recruitment Initiatives, and then you just heard the Summer Bridge Program. There's also, with the support of some Strong Start Funds, we were able to enhance some outreach efforts with Native American programs, as well as some collaborations between departments that provided retention and support to some of our most financially vulnerable students. Goal number two is curriculum and pedagogy. The objective is to incorporate the principles of DEI into curriculum, promote methods and strategies that foster respect for differences in perspectives and circumstance, encouraging experiential learning and application, and prepare students for success in a diverse and complex world. That shows up in many different parts of how we do our work at EOU. Our Title IX efforts are part of that initiative where we are doing things that are we're implementing programs and tasks around high-impact practices, both in academic and student affairs. Last year, the Academic Affairs Team launched our mini-opening session conference that allowed for professional development opportunities across the campus. Our third goal is the management, measurement, and accountability. And that was that is focusing on design and develop a comprehensive system that defines responsibilities, accountabilities, and measures progress towards achieving a culturally diverse academic community, and improved campus climate, and advancing the knowledge of diversity and difference in perspective. So some of our efforts in various programs, including Title III, really are part of this work that helps us look at performance measures and explores specific strategies to enhance student outcomes. The fourth goal is campus culture and climate. That is focused on fostering a campus culture and climate that will respect differences, encourage inclusiveness, and reflect diversity in accordance to the values and principles of Eastern Oregon. And you heard yesterday about some of the intentional work around Great Colleges to Work For, the Civility Campaign. And there's more other initiatives, such as the Common Read First Year Experience Program. Community outreach and engagement. And the focus on or the objective around that work is to build and strengthen partnerships with diverse communities, community-centric organizations, and civic government entities to advance diversity and multiculturalism in the university and the region. Again, many things are happening. Departments, divisions, and partners are building relationships. I think one of the most notable ones that just happened recently, and we were featured in OPB yesterday, was the Connected Day Gathering. Thank you to President Ryan for the opening the gathering and Chair Mendoza for being the keynote. We had 21 organizations across the state that were part of that gathering. And so in general, there's, as I said, there's many things that are happening around campus, around this plan. But there are also some intentional approaches that we're hoping to take to continue to work on the implementation of the plan. Several of them include really evaluating and enhancing the strategic plan, creating a unified vision for what we're trying to do, and then leveraging resources that we have with our partner EAB to create some benchmarks in how we continue to do the work and establish some strategies and best practices. We also want to support the Diversity Committee, which is the committee that worked on developing this plan as the implementation task force. So working with them to really identify and assess capacity that they have, provide the needed professional development training for them, and helping guide them in or provide the support that they need to lead the work. This will also involve creating task force and working with partners across campus on subject matter expertise so that we can continue to engage in those partners on campus and off campus, but also departments who do some of the on-the-ground level work. And then one of the other things that we want to do is always continue to provide support to how we are making informed decisions in our data. So grounding all of our decisions in the data by defining metrics that help us track our key performance indicators, identifying what those can look like, and so that we can use it to measure our retention rates, look at how things like employee diversity ratio, as well as participation in our professional development opportunities that we would be providing. It's also important, as we think about aligning this work, to set some benchmarks. So using internal data that helps us compare and set realistic benchmarks for our progress, and hopefully developing a dashboard that allows us to track that work. And most importantly, being able to foster cross-departmental collaboration, really encouraging knowledge sharing and data sharing to really help us see how we can continue to break silos and work as partners as we move our retention and work on our retention efforts. I sent I wanted to end. I have a short presentation, so you have you have lots of time to ask me questions. I wanted to end by just saying that there's a lot of great things that you've heard these last two days, and many things that are happening across campus to really support a lot of the different initiatives and strategies centering in equity across our work. And so one that I wanted to highlight is our Benefits Navigator work. This was a bill, House Bill 2835, that was passed in 2021. This bill allowed us to provide allocated support for basic needs for low-income students in community colleges and public university to really address the opportunity gap. And the handout that I shared with you shows some numbers of the students that we were able to serve, students that identify their needs, what those needs were, and then we were able to do referrals, provide support that allowed them to continue to be successful. One of the main reasons for this bill, and also something that we've seen as a success, is the ability to see that when we address these these issues and challenges that students face, it allows them to be better prepared to really engage in the classroom and be invested in their educational journeys. The graph shows the needs, and as you can see, food is always a high need for students. And so we've worked to develop food insecurity, address food insecurity on our campus. But there's also an array of many different requests that students ask for. And one of the things that we've been really happy about, and I was really happy to hear Haley talk about open-mindedness and meeting students where they're at, is recognizing as where we've identified what we can provide for our students. We're also learning from them what their needs are and how we can think about supporting them and meeting them where they're at. And that is all I have. So if you have any questions.
I'll entertain questions. I'll definitely have some myself, but I want to. Oh, I got Trustee Thompson.
Beanie, when you talk about outreach, do you provide any outreach or support for online students?
Yes, we we started, we have, we built a website last year, and that's been kind of the students reach out and we help them kind of on an individual basis. But Dr. Ryan has really challenged us to think about other ways of doing outreach. So starting January, there will be, we'll implement a student virtual resource fair that will allow students to know what's available in terms of services.
I guess that was probably my my follow-on question was if you do the outreach, are the online students aware of what you do offer? You know, and how do you get that message out to them of what you offer?
Yeah. In this, we have some state. We're still really investigating how to provide support in outside of the state of Oregon. But in the state of Oregon, the Benefits Navigator is a consortium. And so we're able to work with different institutions across the state to help identify if we have students in their areas to and build partnerships with them to provide support. We also partner with Department of Human Services, the Oregon Food Bank, and they have different partners across the state. For students who are outside of Oregon, we haven't really started working on those things, but we're aware that when those needs arise, we need to reach out and talk. But so far, we haven't really done a lot more deeper work around outside of Oregon, although Benefits Navigator are now expanding in the Pacific Northwest.
Great question, great answer. Trustee Hoffman.
Yeah, Beanie, I was just noticing how many of the services relate to healthcare. And since these are low-income students, I would think that that many of them may be eligible for Medicaid. And I wonder if there's a role for the navigator to play in assisting the students signing up for Medicaid. So that might be a role that that the navigator could expand to. And I think that's something the CCO could help help her do, so.
Yeah, we we have partners with ODHS as well as EOCO. Our navigator on campus is a certified OHP assister. But she also, we learned that she hasn't been able to meet students because she's three months booked. So what actually in one of the things that we have is we have the DHS on campus once a week for three hours, and they help provide SNAP, and they also can enroll them into health insurance.
You're way ahead of me.
Oding.
First, thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to ask, like, what's some of the feedback that you've received from students after doing all of these programs? Like, how has it helped them going into, like, for returning students or having them recommend these programs to the other students?
For last year, we we did a very short survey, and we actually didn't get a lot of, it was on campus. Unfortunately, I think we had 20 students respond. They were, it was fairly, you know, they were happy about the services. The focus of the the survey was more around like, what did, what other needs do they want to see provided? But in general, there was good feedback and a lot of suggestions on other things they would like. So there were things around providing tax help. You know, a lot of those other that came in, helping them navigate how to use health insurance in terms of like, what does it mean to, if I need to go to surgery? We had several of those. We had several students who just needed to know if I'm moving here, how do I find a primary care physician? Two things like, you know, talking points to understanding the process of their degree. So especially transfer students, learning how to use the transfer equivalency tool, kind of ranges.
Trustee Lear.
Carrie asked part of my question about the online. I I think that this data were in our spring information, but I think I'm always going to be interested what the intersectionality of the data from the DEIA information and our retention or enrollment, because it seems like these are some of the students that we're going to be the most at risk of losing due to the the variables in their lives. So I think I'd just always be curious, and you kind of spoke to this a little bit, is are these services effectively retaining? Because as you're talking, I'm thinking to myself, like, what a better safety net. Go get a higher education, and meanwhile, you'll have more on-time services provided to you than you may have been able to access even in the community at large. And if we can also support them, as you do, and Pell, and all of the various ways that they can get the education paid for, it seems like we've got this thing percolating that it's like, if you come to EOU, even if it feels like an insurmountable barrier to go to higher ed, you might be in a better position than you would have been, like, future earnings aside, just your your life and your standard of living. Just in if you can fast-track a three-month waiting for Medicaid, like, those kinds of things alone, or there's a value add there. And I don't know what that looks like, because it's also tricky to communicate. Hey, struggling with your life? Come to EOU. We've got supports. But, you know, anyway, I'm just really, I think that this is something that, as we continue to focus on, it will be really impactful, because I think that once we get them in the door and connect them, these are going to be life-changing momentum points that can ripple out. And to your point about locality, this this is really how we win over our region, too. So I don't think embedded in that was a question, and I thought there was going to be one. But I think it's, I just really am excited by this work and would encourage to keep that the intersectionality of enrollment and retention around this particular facet really front of mind.
Thank you. That's definitely come to mind, and we are thinking about what that in. We have a community of practice, a statewide consortium that we work with. And we've been thinking about, like, how do we develop a rubric for connecting the services to, you know, GPA stats and what that looks like? It's not clear. I think it's simpler in, you know, when students are engaged. So there's no real, you know, answer, but that's definitely top of mind. How do we, you know, develop a rubric that allows us to say, what is that number or that threshold that that where this is truly impacting? And we know it does, but to put it into like graph and numbers is is something that we're still trying to find the right formula.
And there may be a connection point with our K-12 partners here, because we have a really good bead on students navigating poverty, which means their families are navigating some of those challenges. And I'm curious where that linkage of where our K-12 lens for the parents stops, if that's where a partnership with EOU could start in handing over some of these families and giving them maybe some motivation or thoughts around that. Like, our dual credit effort hits the students, but maybe we can stretch it then into, what do the dual credit students look like? It looks like Dr. Ryan has something around those to say, so I will zip it.
Yeah, I do want to share. I think that that, more than others, has been the result of all the attention that we've spent on K-12 since last year, is really learning about need. And and I want to kind of shine a light on the incredible work of Beanie here in that regard. You know, we learned when I was in, you know, Ontario, of a really deep need for this region to serve better the children of migrants. And so Beanie just submitted a camp grant that would allow us to serve that. Right now, they're they're going all the way to OSU, and they may be more likely to achieve stay here. Similarly, very quickly, we realized the need for the Trio Grant, which can similarly support these students from the K-12 environment in meaningful ways. And I also want to share, I feel that like we're doing a good job, just even working with with new partners. For example, when I visited the Burns Paiute last Friday, they shared, hey, Pepper calls us once a month, you know? And she's really helping us build out this new education program. So I really feel that we're trying to be a responsive institution and hear from our partners about ways we can level up. I'm hopeful we're successful with at least one of these grants, because we do need the funding to serve them better. But it is exciting work, and Beanie is always responsive. And one of the things I like most about her is that she understands the students who come here are the students we serve, and we meet them exactly where we are. And that heart and soul is is kind of the genesis of what I think the whole campus will will adopt eventually.
Very nice. We'll do two more questions. We got Vice Chair Cronin and then Trustee Valerio. Trustee, your Vice Chair Cronin defers.
No, because of me. Thank you, Beanie. Thank you for all the great work you have done. I think it shows big time. I love the idea of the navigator. My eyes were caught, my attention was caught by this number of food. And we have five or four or five different programs that address that. We have Meals Card, SNAP, Grocery Cards, Swipe Out, Food Bank, there is a food bank inside. And it still remains almost three times as large as the other one. I guess I'm saying that because I'm working with food banks in the work I do with the foundation, and we hear always the same thing. Now, today, this this time, we hear we have the least amount of availability of food with the highest request we have ever seen. And this is in a community outside this campus. So can you tell us more about this food 295 there? Because this surprises me, because we have so much support there. Because this surprises me, because we have so much support there already.
Yeah, I, there's a couple of layers of, like, food when we provide food. And it's a partnership around different departments on campus and community partners, specifically our Community Connection. So Isaac yesterday talked about the Swipe for Hunger. That was an initiative that came from the students. A lot of these are initiatives that students get to share their stories in legislature and some of the bills, the Benefits Navigator bill is one of those things. The food is really, some of them are addressed short-term. And then the hope for, like, a program like SNAP is that long-term. So we brought the Food Bank to campus, a very small version. And there are several partners on our campus, and there's many different, I guess, policies that we have to work on around food. So with that, we still find that there's also culturally responsive food needs that we want to address with students. They're short-term, where if students who, depending on transportation, could really benefit from being able to eat on campus and not have to go home for lunch or, like, dinner and stay for, like, a study session or be able to be engaged in different things. So the variety of offerings is really to meet the variety of student needs. But we also track, with the Swipe for Hunger as an example, we recognize that it's a vulnerability. So we're looking at how we can watch how students are requesting to a certain level where we as staff, who are part of the work, can then work with the students to kind of eliminate the stigma and then provide long-term support, such as opportunities to get SNAP. And if that's not the case, specifically for students who may not qualify, what are those other options? So that's why there's a variety of different offerings that we have.
Thank you, Beanie.
Vice Chair Cronin.
I just, Beanie, every time you come to report to the trustees, I look forward to your report. And every time, you have more wonderful news and initiatives that you are working on. And this is really, really important work that you and your team are doing. And these are our students. I remember when I was working in John Day, I had a student who had to choose. She came to me, and she had to choose between buying food and buying the medicine that she needed to be healthy. And we, I was able to reach out to the EOU Foundation, and they gave her a small grant. This is, so there's continuing need. This represents a tremendous amount of collaboration and partnership. And I just want to suggest that maybe you make sure that the advisors in the centers all around the state have this document and are partners with you in this. But congratulations, and I just look forward to next year.
Thank you.
I'll do a final comment, and impressive. The one thing I would say, besides all the wonderful things that you're doing, is the next steps that you have with the strategic plan. I'll do a little plug. Erin Lehrer, for me, has one of the most wonderful minds for strategic planning. She thinks about data and indicators and correlations. It's who she is. So if you do talk to her about the next steps with KPIs and what are good indicators for that, and anything with benchmarks and what are good data points to connect for that, whatever it might be, I think as you wrap that up or as you hopefully present to academic and Student Affairs over time, how that work is going, I wind up feeling like Erin, even though it's a little more of a task, Erin will greatly impact that work from a trustee perspective, if you're looking for that. Okay, I'm going to move us on. We're going to go to prison education programs, and we're going to have Dr. Geisinger present. I'm going to find that. Dr. Geisinger is our Provost and Senior Vice President of Academic Affairs. Peter. And we have Scott McConnell, Dean Scott McConnell, College of Business. Wonderful man, great parent, great father, good business owner. We are going to have a presentation on our prison education program.
Thank you very much, Chair Mendoza. And my role here is to pass the stage on to Dean McConnell. You know, I was able to delegate, not just, I really, I'm really glad that he took on the task of working on this prison education program. So without further ado, here is Scott.
All right, thank you, Chair Mendoza and the rest of the board. Appreciate your time. We have been working on this for close to, well, close to a year. We've been thinking about it, I guess. It was early last spring that Dean Nate Lau, who's behind me here, and I and Kelly Ryan, we toured some facilities in our region to kind of take a look at what were the opportunities or what are the opportunities for us to be able to engage and try to improve our community in this particular way. This is basically coming about because of the change to the Pell Grant availability for what are called AICs, Adults in Custody. And this is something that is, we are about halfway, hopefully, through. We are, and I'll kind of explain where we're at on the program. And hopefully, most of you have heard that we are moving down this path. So we're looking at degree pathways for these individuals, incarcerated individuals. The institutions that we are looking at working with is the Snake River Penitentiary in Ontario, Oregon, and also Eastern Oregon Correctional Institution in Pendleton. This is in partnership with Treasure Valley Community College, who is already working in those institutions. And they are working to provide associate's degrees for the AICs. Our target degrees are the interdisciplinary studies bachelor's degree, which is a combination of two minors. And so it provides for a lot of leeway to be able to offer different study options and also a business minor. And since the interdisciplinary studies bachelor's is two minors, that business minor would serve as one of the minors potentially. This effort does align with our strategic plan, as many of you are aware. And I just noted a couple of areas. Goal three, expanding student access and completion in our region. And goal five, serving as an educational, cultural, and economic engine for rural areas. This does support historically underserved populations as well as incarcerated individuals fit that category. Some statistics on incarceration. The Snake River Penitentiary has a population of 3,000 incarcerated individuals. A lot of people don't even realize how large that institution is. That is 10% of Malheur County's population. And the incarcerated individuals do count on the census, and so this is 10% of the county. Some benefits to this effort. One is reduced recidivism. I believe the number is 5% of individuals who receive or pursue education in the institutions end up going back. Improved behavior during incarceration. We had, a number of the institutions that we visited were very eager for us to do this. They see the benefits firsthand. Safer communities post-release. Many of the incarcerated do end up in some of our local communities. And having these educational goals does provide for that sense of self-worth, which leads to the last point, the restoring of humanity and educational opportunities for the incarcerated individuals. We were able to meet a gentleman who received his PhD behind bars. And he did that on his own. He must have had, you know, the means to do so. And so what we're trying to provide is others with those same means, if possible. So the approvals that we've received so far, we've been working with the Department of Corrections, and they were able to give us the, kind of, the tour of the facilities that we looked at. And also, the state of Oregon has reached out to us to provide this service to this part of the state. The Higher Education Coordinating Commission, HEC, has given us their approval as well, so we are that far. We are currently working with the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities, which is our accreditation body. And actually, Peter and I will be attending the NWCCU conference next week and meeting with the folks that are working on that accreditation process with us. And then after that, we will seek full submission to the U.S. Department of Education for Pell approval. So right now, like I said, TVCC is offering the associate's degrees. What we're looking to do is to add on those final two years. And I might add, TVCC has done a lot of the legwork as far as putting in place the necessary infrastructure and personnel that we hope to share some of that personnel cost and share some of that infrastructure as well in providing those final two years for the AICs. The thing that struck me touring these facilities, too, was the amount of education that's already taking place and the amount of innovation that's taking place. A lot of people don't know the denim, Prison Blues, the denim factory started at EOCI in Pendleton. There's dog training that's taking place there, which is really impressive. There's a furniture shop at the Snake River Institution, which produces probably some of the most beautiful furniture you've ever seen in your life. And maybe you have some in your house. I don't know. Because I know it gets auctioned off, and I believe it's halfway. Or no, it's, yeah, halfway, I believe. Anyway, every year, they take a bunch to a festival in halfway, and I guess it's gone before anybody can even get there to purchase it. So, yeah, and so it's really impressive to see what they're doing already. And I think adding the opportunities to achieve a bachelor's degree makes a lot of sense, so. All right, so cost, right? So let me zoom in on this, so you can see. This is a first kind of crack at this. Let's see if I can get rid of the, oh, there we go, okay. So I met with Portland State University, who is offering this program through Coffee Creek Penitentiary in the Portland area. And I asked them for their, basically, their income statement or balance sheet and just kind of look at where the costs lie on this particular thing. I tweaked it a bit for us, because we would be a smaller program and hopefully more efficient. And so we looked at, I just basically took their model and kind of tweaked it a bit. And so they do have grants. There's what's called an Ascendium Grant, which is a national grant that we could go after. For the size of our institution, the grant would be something like a quarter of a million dollars if we were to be successful. There's no guarantee we would get that, of course, but that is something that we could potentially go after. The Oregon State Legislature could also, and I know Dr. Ryan could probably speak to that, since it's an effort that they support, could hopefully support us in that, in this effort financially as well. We do have the completion money for graduates. So if we get our four-year graduates, Leann and I worked on looking at this, and it's about $135,000. There would be a ramp-up period of about four years until we get to that point, just because of the way that that funding model works. There's a delay in receiving that funding. But that's about $135,000. And then the Pell tuition, if we had 15 students, two courses per term for four terms, the estimate there, because the max right now is $7,400 per student, would be about $111,000. And so total revenues for this program, about $685,000, all told, if we were successful with all the opportunities there. And then, of course, there are individual contributions, which I did not list, and any sort of university contribution as well. Costs are down here. Hopefully, everybody can see that okay. We would need, most likely, some sort of a director in this position to direct this effort. PSU has academic coordinators, program managers, college navigators. I think we could probably get away with a little bit less than that. And so we would just have to discuss what that program exactly looks like and what are the needs for that. But I do think, and this is something that I spoke with Leann about as well, having a dedicated director probably does make sense. Some administrative support, so. And then some of the costs below their faculty salary, of course, that's dedicated toward this effort, which this effort would be mostly online. It would be actually using Microsoft Teams or any other technology to go directly into a onsite classroom. Most of the institutions do have full capabilities as far as classroom space and all of that and the ability to be remote. But they do have opportunities to actually go to the institutions as well. And I believe it's EOCI in Pendleton is still not completely ready for that technology, but Snake River is, so. Let's see, other salaries, hardware, software. I just listed everything that P is. I just basically took PSU's current expenditures and looked at all that. I did increase one of theirs, which is travel, local travel for both, potentially a faculty or a director going to visit the institutions. I assumed one trip every other week by location. And then that gets us just down to an expense total of about $500,000. And so, you know, obviously, we're trying to be as conservative as possible here and add every expense in there, but there might be some things that we missed. So that is what I have for you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Before we get to questions, I do want to, my understanding is this is an action item, and this was already recommended for approval from the Academic Student Affairs. Is there anything that you'd like to share? Trustee Lehrer.
That's correct. So we asked, this became more of a discussion topic rather than a consent agenda just because of some of the questions that arose in the ASA Committee, primarily around kind of some of these budget pieces, knowing that budget's a pretty high-level conversation for us to be having right now. So I appreciate some of even the updates since our committee. So we were hoping or anticipated some questions or further discussion on this before, and then we will be asking for a recommendation to approve the program.
Questions? Brad Stevens, Trustee Stevens.
Very interesting. It wasn't clear in the number of students you thought you would get and also the number of different classes you might teach at one time.
Yep, the number of classes would be, and this is just based off of what's happening right now and what our conversation with the institutions themselves. And we'd probably be looking at two courses per term maximum. And I estimated 15 students going through the program at a time. So 15 students for two courses each is the numbers I used, yeah.
Any other questions?
I have one, George. Scott, have you worked with, or do you know if at the prisons, if they have a, like, a veteran representative person there? I know some of these incarcerated veterans will still have education benefits that they can use to pay for, and I just wonder if that's something that we've looked at also?
Yeah, Kelly's nodding her head, so I'll let her speak to that.
Yeah, actually, we visited in Ontario the entire veterans area, which took up a whole building, actually, there. And so, yeah, they have a coordinator and services there. It's like many other government services, though, that are extraordinarily understaffed. But, yeah, that was something we actually talked about is there would be some individuals who could get past just Pell in some ways in paying for the education piece. And actually, we should probably coordinate with you on that. Fair enough. Thank you.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yeah, I just sent President Ryan a text on a program we have called SHARE, which stands for Supporting Health for All Through Reinvestment. And it's an Eastern Oregon program. And education is an area of focus of that program. And higher education is one of the areas of focus on education. Eastern's Head Start Program has been the recipient of several grants from that program, and the grants are up to $250,000 each. And I'm not sure, but this, I think this would qualify, Scott, and I'll send you the information on who to contact at EOCO, but it might be a great opportunity to get some funds for this program locally.
Thank you very much. Trustee George.
I just wanted to mention that we own a number of businesses in the Pendleton area, and we use EOCI quite a bit for a lot of, I'm kind of surprised to hear that furniture is the big thing in Snake River, but we use them for replacing a lot of our furniture in our businesses in Pendleton. But we use them quite a bit and very successful program. So I just wanted to give a shout out there.
Thank you. Any other? Okay, Cedric.
Yeah, a pretty quick question. So with the assumption of the students that you're going to get, I was just curious, with the other programs that are already... the other programs that are already involved or our partnerships, what has been their success? I mean, we're talking of some successes, but do they share like some numbers and metrics? Like how many people have they been able to impact?
Yeah, it's pretty new as far as the most recent programs and the successes. I am part of what's called the O-CEP is the acronym, and basically, it's all of the Oregon Higher Education groups are meet monthly, and there are national groups as well. And yeah, the successes of those that go through the program, graduation rates are around 50% or so. And a lot of that, too, is because a lot of the individuals that go through the educational programs will actually leave and not finish within the program because they're driven to, and they're close to release or something like that. And then the hope and where the data falls off unfortunately is to know if they finish outside or not, right? But that is the hope, and that is why we're working in a regional sense. And also, strategically, we're trying to create programs that are very similar to what the rest of the state is doing, so that if a incarcerated individual is released, say, into Portland, and they started with us, they could finish either with PSU, or if they started with PSU, they could finish with us if they came out this way. And so to try to improve some of that, those successes, yeah.
And I would share in terms of like numbers of enrollment, if that's what you were kind of getting at, there's really severe space limitations in these facilities, and so you're not able to get like a full, you know, 30-person class size in most of these spaces, and it's a real fight to even have access to them. So they're smaller programs.
And it's pretty competitive amongst the prisoners themselves to actually be a part of this program. And it's seen as something pretty special for them if they can be a part of it.
Trustee Stanley.
Thanks, Chairman Doza. Kelly, I think you might have just answered the question, but we're looking at 15 as kind of being the maximum, correct?
Yeah, it's the limitations of space, so Snake, not Snake River, the Ontario one has a little more space for us than over in Pendleton, so class size there might be a little larger. The thing is, though, is over in Pendleton, they already have students ready and they want to go because they've already, they're already almost done with their associate's degree. So, and they've also found in both spaces that the AICs have been asking for a service provider for this. So I think we're going to have as full as we can fit bodies in the room. It's just a matter of the space debate.
Sure, if I can ask a quick follow-up question. So is that 15 across the two, or is that 15 in each institution?
In each institution. I would be comfortable seeing the space that we saw anyway. I think each room, 15 would probably be pretty comfortable, I think.
Thanks, guys.
Final questions, any comments?
Actually, if I can jump in one more time, guys. So I think we might have covered this in our committee meeting, but if you could remind me, and maybe it helps shape the discussion, my understanding is this is for the program approval. So what would happen if we didn't get those grants?
Well, the Ascendium Grant I did put in there, and that is one that many of these institutions go after. And so I'm not sure if we, you know, we would have to hopefully get assistance from the state level, and maybe Kelly can speak to that.
Yeah, so we were asked to help, and we will help if and when we can help. So if we don't have the monies, you know, we cannot deliver to one of those two institutions, right? So we could support one and then eventually build up to the second rather than delivering right away, but we would need support to get at this line. And then the other thing I would share is there had, there was discussion in Congress about raising the Pell, the amount that's given, that would obviously make this and many other AIC education programs much more sustainable. And so we kind of have to, you know, these are difficult questions for individuals, but you know, if we really want to move people out of prisons, investing in their education is really great, a great way to do it, but setting aside the monies to do so, you have to have the political will. So, you know, we don't have to do anything, right? Once we have the approval, we can be like, you know what, that's not for us anymore. But for us, we did, kind of like I mentioned, we did want to, we did want to help, we were asked to help, and we do want to help, and, you know, Grand Canyon's just waiting. They're just right outside the door, so.
Thank you so much. I think it's such a great opportunity to expand our outreach into our region.
Great recap, too, on that really good presentation, Dean McConnell. And the cause is a great cause, and I do think it's going to, even if we pile it without the funding yet, and then hopefully we get that funding over time, I think it's a very worthy endeavor. Yep, okay. So, great discussion. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion. Is there any reason that I can't as the chair from the committee?
I think you can.
I would like to make a motion to approve this program.
There's been a motion to approve by Trustee Lair. Here's a second from Trustee Real. All in favor, please say yes. Any opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
We're going to move on to one more, we're going to give a little bit of time. You can get to your section. Team, we're going to talk about presidential compensation. If you can get to your document on the agenda where we have it. I think my thoughts on this is just to kind of go over with you on the process that I followed to arrive to that. I did communicate with our board members related to the process. First, I visited with Chris just to understand it in terms of the bylaws, and then after that, I met with Chris McLaughlin and Leann Case to really get the information related to other universities and how they compensate, and then things that are going on in our university in terms of raises that were given to our administrators, or raises that were given to our staff members. I did get information on the cost of living, the CPI index, Consumer Price Index. And really where I started to rest on all of these conversations was President Ryan was compensated based on her initial contract, and lumping her in with raises that have been given as of September for administrative professionals felt, you know, she's an administrator. Having her with the administrators, to me, seemed like a proportionate concept to go with. Next, I learned a little bit about, you know, I did ask about, are there any bonuses that are out there, are there any existing structures that EOU already has? And Chris and Leann were able to talk to me a little bit about the student credit hours and how they have that as a new incentive or a new bonus based on increases for student credit hours. So I felt again that that was a good one to consider for her. I then also talked to Kelly. I guess first I'd say, I'm also an administrator, I have experience in that. I do think about retention and retention bonuses as a way to keep people. So that was something that I talked to Chris and Leann about as well, and there was a kind of a, well, we haven't done that in the past. Okay, I understand that. Part of it for me on retention bonuses is also, that's how you keep people, and you keep sustainability or stability in organizations. And it's a lot of work to replace a president. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of energy, it's a lot of cost. And starting to think about that was something that was important to me. Same thought process also for talking a little bit about annuities for the future. We had that conversation, I then had that conversation with Kelly. And where we arrived was basically, she really liked the idea of being lumped in with administrative professionals for raises that they're receiving. She did like the idea of being lumped in for student credit hour bonuses. She did feel that over time, she's happy to talk about a retention bonus likely as we negotiate the next contract, and then a retention bonus that goes into the following years for that, and then potentially an annuity that would come in. The amounts that I shared in this document were the amounts that I discussed with her as basically initial agreements if we were to have those. From what I understand with Chris, we wouldn't really get to a retention bonus in this contract. She would indicate in January or the end of December of this year that she's interested in staying, and then as part of that negotiation, we would have conversations about a retention bonus. And then we would also have conversations about an annuity. From the conversations that I had, there was interest in the annuity, whether it's from the university and the general funds of the university. I think the preference was potentially through the EOU Foundation and how that would work out. I wound up then visiting with Chuck. Chuck is our financial affairs chair, and I really wanted to hear what Chuck had to say. And I also visited with Chris Cronin. Also, she's a former university official here, knows a little bit about the university, knows a little bit about compensation, knows a little bit about working with executives. So I wanted their input, and I felt like I had a, that's a pretty good proposal. And then from there, I talked to Chris again about what we wanted to do or what I was thinking about doing, and then it's now here with you. I sent it in an email to you. So now's a good time if you have any questions or concerns, and then we can discuss it.
George, could I just give a little background about the process? We have an intersection of two separate processes that have just kind of converged here. The first is the process described, well, we'll just say Board Statement Number Seven is the board statement that describes the process by which the president gets their annual evaluation, their comprehensive evaluation as well. And then its final section talks about at the conclusion of the annual evaluation, the board will consider, in some degrees, related to how that evaluation went, but will consider making a change to the president's compensation. And that's the process that this recommendation results from. It's something we do every year. You know, we didn't do it during the presidential search year for obvious reasons, but otherwise it's an annual process. What's a little different this time around is the actual terms that were negotiated in President Ryan's initial contract, her current contract. You may recall, well, probably don't need to go into a ton of detail about it, it'll just say it's a three-year contract. But halfway through, a little before halfway through, December 1st of the second year, which is coming up very soon, the chair is to initiate a conversation with the president about negotiating her next contract. And that process is expected to be concluded, is in the terms of the current contract, by June 1st of next year. So that's quite interesting. What happens then, by June 1st, one, that's the decision point, one of two things is going to happen. Either there isn't a new contract, and the president has essentially let us know that over the, she's contractually here for another year, but that's it. Or there's a new contract, and the old contract and what it said about the third year doesn't apply anymore. So that's initially, and I could have done a better job briefing George up about this because I talked to him about the board statement number seven part, but I didn't really talk about the contract renegotiation part until he was almost done with the process, and that was oversight on my part. But I want you guys to understand, that's kind of the context in which this is happening. So instead of just being a one-off thing we do every year, there's, behind it is the fact that there's actually a contract renegotiation process that's going to start and be concluded, really, in the next six months. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary, refer. So as you can see on the documents, it goes into her current contract, her compensation, you see future. I do want you to start asking questions if you have any questions. I can definitely go over numbers if you'd like to.
I'm sorry, I'm a little slow on this, but we're talking about a contract possibly coming up next year by June, is that right? So right now, we're in the discussion for something that we want to actually complete by next June, or are we?
I would probably say, right now, we're in this contract. If we're going to get into retention bonuses or annuities, that's part of the discussion for the next contract.
Right, but what we're discussing now is what's going to come up in June when we, is that right?
Right now, we're discussing what would be compensated as of September. If we give her a 3.5% raise, it's for this, which the contract that she's in, and it's a compensation increase for this year. So I'm going to, I don't want to muddy it too much. This is a compensation increase effective from September, she would get a 3.5% increase to her salary. She's going from $295,000. With the 3.5% increase, I think I have the numbers here somewhere, it becomes, I'm using my memory right now, 305,000, somewhere I have it. 305, 325,000 for her compensation. With the bonus for student credit hours, my understanding from the conversation I've had with Chris is it's really from the end of year to the end of year, so it's really '22, '23 to '23, '24. It's about a 0.75 or a 3% increase, which equates to 0.75 of a percent. She would qualify for that, which is what the administrative professionals or the, for me, I would use the word certified, the certified staff or the professors get. I haven't equated that, I was told that by Chris, that 0.75 the other day, so I didn't put that in this document, but that's what that would happen. She would get that bonus.
Sorry, just to clarify a thing, if we make the decision today to do this, which of course I'm supportive of, but you would then communicate that with her now, or are you going to wait till?
I would communicate that part now, and that, I'm going to call it, that is done. The compensation conversation is done. The new contract conversation will start after December 1st, and that's where we'll talk about, I'm just making it clear that we had talked about retention bonuses and whatnot, but then what we had decided on was as part of the next contract, that's when we'll get into retention bonuses or annuities. Sorry if that was confusing. No, it's okay. I understand. Any other comments?
Have a question for clarity. So the discussion is hinged upon this changes to compensation, four different bullet points. A 3.5 increase, student credit hours, a retention bonus of five, and retention bonus of 17. So there are four components to that that we are hoping or we are discussing to say a yea or nay today, correct?
Correct. The one thing I would say, my friend, is the next two, the last two bullets there, retention bonus, 5,000 if contract renegotiated and still employed, June 1st. And then my viewpoint was having it increased by 2,500 the next year, so we wouldn't talk about it again.
Thank you, George. My question is a larger question to the faculty bonus or to the administrative. So how many positions on campus do we have that are linked to a performance? a performance? Here specifically, the bullet point said student credit hours indicator. Is this going to be the first, the only position that has that kind of a direct link?
No. From what, Leanne will know better, but I know it was happening for administrative professionals and faculty, and that's where I knew that it was there.
Yeah, it's actually in the faculty collective bargaining agreement.
The student credit hour bonus is only for the faculty, and it's built into their collective bargaining agreement. That was new in the '22-'26 bargain. So I think what we had talked about is if that was an option for Dr. Ryan going forward as well, we want to talk about having that bonus included.
And the rationale for that, if I may, is she, by statute, she is the president of the faculty, and in her, in her contract, she has faculty status, obviously not a union member.
Yeah, my only thought, thank you, appreciate the clarity. My only thought is to the larger body of employees of the university, where is always attention of fairness, right? And attention of fairness is there. We were talking about morale of classified earlier on and what they perceived, this kind of thing. So this is, I'm glad that we're having this discussion, and the word fair is a very complicated word, right? So, but, thank you. I'd love to lean on...
The other thing too, just for me, that was thoughts that I had is, other people get step in column increases, she does not. Other people grow in terms of their scale, she does not. So this little thing to me was kind of like, this is a little bit of, and it's really based on if they hit targets.
Can you speak to, I think that the 3.5 in COLA or CPI is aligned with employees, and so she really wanted to be aligned with employees, and I appreciated that very, very much.
If I may, there's really two components that, on this compensation part, and they relate to different segments of the employee population. So the 3.5% is the amount that the president approved for administrative professionals to receive. And this year, unlike the other years, it started September 1st. Normally, it's with the fiscal year. This year, it's September 1st. So that part is viewing her through the lens as an, essentially as the ultimate administrative professional, where this, the new piece is also acknowledging her status as a faculty member, and while she would not get step increases and all the other things that come with the very elaborate compensation package of the collective bargaining agreement, this piece that's built around growth in student credit hours seemed easily to translate over, and it is a performance piece that applies to faculty.
Yeah, I'll throw my two bits in, and just say, I want to congratulate the chair on the work that he did, walking a very close line between keeping things fair and recognizing the hard work of our president. So kudos for him. I think there's an opportunity to recognize her efforts more, as he has talked about in the new contract. But yeah, I just want to congratulate him on doing an excellent, excellent job.
Thank you. Trustee Lehrer.
This might be a dense question, because I feel like it's what Brad asked, but humor me. So is this functionally maybe easier to do in like two actions? Could we go that route where one of them is, what I'm understanding is the decision kind of immediately in front of us at the moment is this 3.5% that would be retroactive to September 1st. It sounds like it was a little bit delayed from when we would have normally timed, which is probably helping to make the conversation a little clunky, is that retroactive nature. And then the other three bullet points are really a conversation of the next contract we're engaging in, is that...
Bullet two would be a part of the compensation?
That would be retroactive to the September 1st.
Whatever the date might be, but I was told, like I said, I think it was, whether it was Friday or this week.
That one's July 1st, right.
Or July 1st.
The second bullet's July 1st.
Of 2024.
No, September 15th, because that's when faculty come back on contract.
The bonus?
Yes.
The bonus is a one-time payment based on their base, so they will receive it this month, but it's not retroactive. It's just a lump sum, an average of about $600 per faculty member.
So those two bullet points then are the question in front of us for the current compensation package that is going to be for the compensation retroactive to September 1st. For the bonus, it would be that snapshot in time at that September 15th per the faculty contract. So both of those things will impact the this year 24-25 compensation. Then the other two bullet points, plus the other things, would be sort of a determination of when we reengage in this contract negotiation. This is what will be in the July 1, 2025, whatever it goes on.
So you just hit bucket one, was those two, the two indicators first, and then bucket two was when we get into contract negotiations?
So could I, just for kind of the efficacy of this conversation, move us to decide on the first bucket first in isolation, and then kind of decide what we want to do? And in that way, based on the work that you've done and the kind of what I'm hearing is the support from those, I'd like to make a motion to approve those two bullet point, the 3.5 increase and our snapshot bonus. I'd like to make a motion to approve that for this year.
I'd second that. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the 3.5% increase and the student credit hour bonus, which I was told would be about a 0.75 increase due to hitting these bonuses. And it's been moved first?
0.75%.
0.75%. Sorry, 4.5%.
And that second was Brad Stevens, right?
Move by Trustee Lehrer, second from Trustee Stevens. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Okay, and then for us down the road, it's really going to be part of the next contract negotiation, and I learned that over time that, and if there's strong views on retention bonuses, I'll need to hear those. And if there's strong views against annuities, I need to hear those. But I will be clear, Dr. Ryan has told me she's interested in those things. I see Tamara has raised her hand.
Thank you. Are we allowed to take action in executive session, or do we have to do that when we return to the general meeting?
We're not in executive session. This is all being live streamed to the universe.
Oh, my apologies. Okay, thank you.
Okay, my friend, is there more discussion on the annuities or any of that?
That's actually the comment that I had, but I just wanted to clear this piece of it away in order to have, so I really appreciate some of the creativity in the other pieces of this, because I think that that's how we're going to get to a more comprehensive compensation package. I love the annuity idea through the foundation. So if we can go that route, because that's, some of that deferred type of income, I think is going to be really valuable in our place. I mean, we've just had the PERS conversation, and it's just not, you know, what it used to be. So I, and I also like that connectivity of value, what it indicates of a shared value with our foundation moving forward. It also blends us as a public university into some of the spaces that really provide a lot of the sustainability in private spaces. So that was more what my comment was going to be about the annuity, but I didn't want it to get, anyway. I love the annuity plan and the bonus plan.
Thank you. And I will share that I did ask Chuck to spend time with me when we get into the foundation conversations. Chuck, likely I'll be with Chuck, and then we're going to have an outside third-party counsel to get into these discussions. So Secretary Burford, although we love him, we're not going to put him in that place. We're going to work with a third-party counsel to make those decisions.
I just want to add on to what Trustee Lehrer has said. I just finished a negotiation with our executive director at the Oregon School Board Association, and these types of incentive, retention incentives and annuities, those are really a good tool to recognize the value of an employee, and I strongly support them and think that it's good to have that out there. And it's kind of a common, it's becoming much more common now to do that kind of thing. And, you know, it's very much in our interest, in our university's interest, to retain our president if the president is performing well. So giving that type of a bonus and those kinds of incentives is really much in our interest.
Yes, sir.
If I may, do you need, Chair Mendoza, do you need from the board, an additional language about the retention bonuses, that we have not made a decision, but the board is favorably looking at these? Do you need some language that you can report to President Kelly?
I would say, once we get to the negotiations piece, we will likely need language or language added to some level of deferred compensation at some point.
But not today?
Do we need it today?
What I would suggest is that we view the conversation about the second two bullets as advisory to the chair as he goes into these negotiations, recognizing that the negotiations in a formal way have not yet begun, and he has not gotten the benefit of legal counsel on these topics yet. So there's a certain amount, none of us except perhaps the legal counsel are aware of, that could be issues that might arise, might need to be considered. So I'd like, I would suggest that we consider this just an advisory conversation. The chair has the discretion at this initial stage to pursue negotiation in the way he sees best, but that we not get the car too far ahead of the horse. That's just my...
So advisory is good right now.
Thank you. And again, excellent job on this, very informative, and it's really helpful in moving forward.
Thank you all. I guess we'll let, I'll chat with Kelly when it's time pretty soon. And I definitely will have Chuck close to me as we do this, and then I'll have Chris close, and then I'll likely update our board too in emails or other pieces, so that you're aware of how things are going. But we'll work with outside counsel on the next contract too. Right, team, this ends a, I left my other notes, but this concludes this section. Closing remarks, George Mendoza here. Okay, thank you. Closing remarks. Thank you for your participating, participation in this board meeting. You know what, before we do this, closing remarks, I would like to take around 30 seconds, if you have 30 seconds to give, around any comments or thoughts related to the board meeting, good or bad. And if there's things that you want to see in the future, say that. But let's go at least 30 seconds, or you can yield your time if you'd like. Trustee Hoffman.
Mr. Chair, tremendous job. Appreciate the hard work you're putting in.
Thank you. Trustee Thompson.
I'd like to say Chairman Mendoza, great job on your first meeting. It went well. I think as we go along, I would like, I know we have time limits on everything, but sometimes more relevant discussion is needed, and I just hope that we're able to, you know, fit time in to discuss things that need the discussion.
Maybe we can add an hour or two hours to the, if you're interested. We'd have to talk, but yeah. Trustee George.
No, I, thank you very much. I really appreciated the meeting, the last two days, the board meetings. There is a lot of information that's presented to all of us, and it's important to be involved in the committee meetings, and I think that's extremely important, is we kind of deal with a lot of the different issues and the consent agenda, as well as a lot of the different things that are happening in the legislative, political arena that, you know, we all would like to help, and just finding ways to help as board members, I think is going to be important in the future.
Well said. Trustee Reel.
I just want to say that I do appreciate, I felt the meeting flow was good. So thank you for keeping us on schedule and pushing through some conversation. Then to the point of having more discussion, we've talked in the past on how the recommendations for approval from the committees generally don't, you know, maybe it's not as respectful, the committee works sometimes to have a bunch of extra conversation around decision that a committee has made. So one thing that I would like to see is on some of the cover sheets, you know, maybe the top three points on why certain decisions were approved by said committees. I think that could be helpful in knowing what the central topics are from an overview, from a quick glance, just so we can, you know, more easily support and reflect on the work of the committee prior to even having the discussion and presentation.
Thank you. Trustee Lehrer.
I was thinking, I actually put a note yesterday, overall, I think that this has been a great board meeting. Thank you, Chair Mendoza and your work. Just because of our time yesterday, we flip-flopped the board statement with the shared governance as the end, and I really loved ending our first day with our shared governance reports. They're usually really fulfilling and upbeat, not to say, Chris, that yours wasn't. I was realizing the reflexive there was, okay. So just in future, I think it'd be really great to end our first day of meetings with those reports from our faculty and our staff and students. It just was a fun way to end the day. Not that that's a critical shift, it just worked really well.
Thank you, my friend. Trustee Stanley.
Thank you, Chairman Mendoza. I want to echo Cedric Hicks' points. I think, Gab, if we had just a brief paragraph in the statements that were issued to us on the agenda, I think that would really help. Helps that way we don't end up repeating all of the work that we did in committee. Also, a question that I feel comes up in just about every discussion is, how can we on the board support this? So potentially adding that to our summaries going forward, of course, I don't want to generate too much more work for staff, as they do put in a lot of work, but it may be cut down on a question that seems to be asked every time.
Thank you.
Yes, I think it was a really interesting meeting and very well-run. I have a basic thing I think we should do, and Cedric talked about it, and all the years I've been on this board, I've always frustrated by the fact I don't know what's going on in other committees that I'm not on. And for instance, I think the consent agenda, we could oppose to what Chuck told me last night, I think we could have more things not on the consent agenda. Yesterday, we had plenty of time, we were actually way out of time, so I think I would advise us to take some of those out of consent agenda. And then, I've talked about this in the past, somehow, how other members that aren't on committees get to have some breakdown of what was discussed, so we have some informational background on what's going on in those other committees, which we don't have. And we've talked them fast about, I think, how we might have some sort of edited stream or something we could have. But it'd be very, very helpful for members to know what's actually happened in other committees and the pros and cons. But very well done.
Mr. Chair, if I might, speaking to Brad's comment, the vice chair of the Finance Administration Committee and I have been corresponding, and he doesn't know this yet, but I'm going to ask him to work with me after every Finance Administration Committee meeting to prepare a summary for the board members. So you'll have that.
That'd be nice. That's a good idea.
First of all, thank you for welcoming me for the past two days. I would just like to ask, there's been a lot of like PowerPoint presentations and different documents. I would just like if they would be linked into, say, the cover sheet, if all of those resources would be in one cover sheet or in like the same source, and I think it'd be really helpful to navigate through those presentations and see if there's like, we could look through and if we have any questions or clarifications on any of them, it'd be a lot easier to pinpoint which one. So, yeah.
Trustee Valerio.
I would like to give priorities to those online. It's so hard to follow meetings online, to make sure that we capture those participants. I know Tamara is there now, and I'm not sure that Brenda is still there, but if they are there, please come in and make your comments. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tamra, or thank you, Valerio. Arigato, Valerio. And thank you. I'm glad we have you, Tamra. Go ahead.
Thank you. Nothing, nothing more to add. Well done, everyone. Thanks very much.
Trustee Smith.
Thank you. I, I feel like I'm still, you know, a little bit of a, in a learning and listening mode on the board, but yeah, Zoom is, is not a great place to interact. And I for sure, like I normally like to keep my camera on in Zoom meetings, but in that space, I was like, you guys don't need to be staring at me the whole time. So, but at any rate, I, I just wanna put in a vote for what, what we're doing right now. I, I think this is a really good way to wrap up a meeting that everyone has a moment to just reflect on the meeting. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Trust, oh, Trustee Valerio.
Yep. We miss you not having you here, Brenda. We had Tamra yesterday, but so, thank you for being, for enduring two days on the Zoom. It's not simple. You win a little prize, I don't know what that is, but we'll give you a prize next time.
Well, I think, I think it's my, yeah, it's for, for not making it is, is my punishment, actually. So, yeah, I missed you all, you know, not being in person. Thanks.
Look forward to seeing you.
My first comment is Chairman Mendoza, Vice Chair Cronin, thank you. Great, great meeting, great to have you. Love the style, the pace. And it's humbling, if it's true, the higher education, it is currently in a storm. It doesn't feel this way here at UU. So that's, it's a good feeling. Thank you.
Great words. Maestro Cronin.
Just very quickly, this is a very high-functioning board, and for that, I am very, very grateful. I really appreciated hearing all of your constructive comments just now. I also want to recognize our staff who have hung in there with us during the last day. And thank you all for, for being here, being resources and putting up with, I see you're still doing some work. But anyway, all of you who are here now in this room and then the staff and the students who came and presented. It's always a rich experience for me to be here. And I feel like I've said a couple times, I'm always coming home when I come to La Grande. So thank you for this time. I really appreciate the trust that you have placed in me as a vice chair. I have a lot to learn, but I have good people here in this room to help. So thank you.
Any thoughts, our wonderful president?
I guess gratitude, right? I would say thank you to each of you for, for the time over the last two days. We really appreciate it. Obviously, university top of mind for me day and night. But it's always nice to have everyone else's thoughts. And, and again, I know this is a huge time commitment for you, so, so much gratitude. Thank you.
Secretary Burford, any, any thoughts, my friend?
I think it's actually, I agree, this is good to get this bright, instant-in-time feedback. I can certainly, some of these are bigger than others. I may talk about some of these with the Governance Committee. So I've written them down and we'll keep track of it.
Personally, I love the ideas, if we could do a summary and it was short and sweet. I love those. Grateful for you all. We have a lot of good humans. Takes a lot of work to make a great institution, so, so I know that. Oh, I'll read that. One final comment, really enjoyed the event last night. So wonderful to celebrate the good work, terrific way to keep staff engaged. They each deserved recognition. That was a great event last night, honoring people, acknowledging people, appreciating people. I think we can, I would like to do that more in my organization. So that was, it was a good, it was good to see that. I'll just say again, I know there's a lot of people that make the work happen for our university. And in particular, it's, it's always kids. I don't know if we, you know, I want us to hear about students and talk about students because they're the reason that we're here. We need to keep that in mind. Yep, great programs, yep, great services, yep, we need to collaborate. We need to look for good outcomes. But students and the students' learning and the student's success is what's most important for me and hopefully for all of us. Really enjoyed our time together. Thank you for your participation in this board meeting. In recognition that some of you have to move quickly on to your next commitment, we have a box lunch available for you. For those that don't have to rush off, I do encourage you to stick around and visit while you're enjoying lunch. Our next regular board meeting will be February 12th and 13th, 2025. And our next board meeting will be in Inloha.